Oh, there we go. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order at some Adameida School Board on Thursday, April 22nd at 7 o'clock PM. If we could start. Instead of doing roll call attendance, I would appreciate someone making a motion to change the chair to Stacy Stout, our vice chair, as I am offsite tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. Tony, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Julie.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan, aye. Lucy Payne, aye.
Aye.
The chair is aye. Motion carries. Stacy, please take over the meeting.
So. Even though we've already done, um, a more total vote, I think it should just be the time to do that.
Okay. Should I go ahead and say I call this meeting to order? Or did Lucy say that? Okay. Okay. So roll call of attendance, please.
Okay, Kevin Donovan.
Here.
Here.
Kelly Regan.
Here.
Stacy Stout.
Here.
Here.
And Ismael is absent.
I'm here.
Oh, he's here. I'm sorry. I didn't see you. All right. I don't know where to look.
Like. Okay, now we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Any, any, uh, any discussion?
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
You need to roll call vote.
Oh, I apologize. We need a roll call.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Tony Vasuni.
Aye.
And Stacy Stout.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
By Kevin, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will have a roll call vote.
Okay, Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vasuni.
Aye.
And, um, as part of the consent agenda, did you want to, um, did we want to thank donors for their contributions in that section?
Yes. Does, does anyone else want to comment? But obviously.
We do that in the action item now. So we have, we moved that out of, we used to have that in the consent agenda. We pulled it out as a separate action item.
Okay. Okay. So we'll do it.
Yes, we'll do it on the agenda. Okay. All right. I was just used to doing it.
Yes. Okay. So now we have next on the agenda, our presentations and recognition. We do not have any student or staff recognition tonight, but we do have a spotlight of Madam Edie Middle School. So we welcome Dr. Newbeck.
All right. Thank you, members of the board. And Superintendent Duffer, it's always a pleasure to be here. So I get to talk about the great things that are happening at the middle school. And tonight is no exception. I, it has been exceptionally difficult year for our staff this year and for our students with COVID-19 and all the different changes been happening. It's been sometimes tough for our teachers to kind of maybe do some, develop some new programs, do some new innovative thinking and so forth with all the different changes been going on. But I'm very proud of our staff this year. They've been working really hard. They've been student focused on whatever they do. The changes that they have been trying to make has been all about students and looking at our strategic plan and starting to find some of those things inside our strategic plan, which we can work on. So tonight I want to talk about and highlight two programs that started this year. And again, they were staff initiated and it is something with students in mind and along with our strategic plan. So really, at the middle school, we are really about opportunities for students to really learn about their passions and their interests. Kids are really trying to find their independence, trying to find what they like, what they don't like. That's why our programming is so vast and not specialized along the way. And really in the middle school, it's about social relationships and that social emotional learning that needs to happen. And so really the, the two programs I'm going to highlight tonight is, is goes exactly towards those strategic planning elements. This is our mission statement, but I just want to highlight a couple of things in our mission statement. First of all, our mission is talks about students possessing academic, social and emotional foundation for individual success. And then also that joy of learning. We really want to promote that joy of learning. Sometimes it's hard for kids, especially middle school. There's so much going on in their world. Sometimes they forget about the joy of learning. So we, we really work at trying to, to bring that back to them. We are also really working on developing those trusting relationships for kids and to enhance what, you know, that relation between not only peer to peer, but also peer to staff member. And also we want to give a dynamic learning environment that is flexible and responsive. So we want to be able to give feedback. We want to be able to give voice and choice as we start looking at the work that they do, the assessments that they do, and you'll see that tonight in one of the programs I've talked about. So the first one is the middle school book club. It goes to that we will ensure opportunities for students to find their passions. It goes to that voice and choice. It's research based to increase engagement and it's part of our readers workshop. Our sixth and seventh grade language arts teachers have been working really hard on the writers and readers workshop. It's a way to easily differentiate within the classroom and meet the students' needs. And this is one way that they change their workshop in order to meet those needs. We, we went out and purchased many new books featuring authors by, for students of color, authors of color. And then also just students and, and titles for, and subjects about kids that come from different backgrounds and what they deal with at home and so forth. And so a lot of our kids are able to relate to those, are able to understand and be more engaged in what they are reading. The clubs form around, again, student passions. The kids actually get to pick the books that they want to read. And then they will learn about character development, about theme and so forth, using their book. And they'll have those discussions with the kids within their groupings as well. And this again will allow for student flexibility when discussing topics. It starts with elementary when they first start talking about the plot, but this takes it even further. What, what happens is that they get to really examine the character because they get to know the character. They get to really enjoy what they're reading. You'll hear Ms. Mancini during the video ask the kids about the mirror and the window. So what they look at is, is it a mirror? Does this book show a mirror to yourself? What do you learn about yourself? Or is it a window to your life and you're seeing it happening? And you kind of can see yourself in what, in the book itself. So that's a great way to be able to engage kids and help them to really interact with the book and be, and have some deeper conversations. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mancini, who we've, who we videotaped and her and a few of our students.
My experience with the book club was that I enjoyed it because we could all like speak our mind and we wouldn't, we could all get our thoughts in instead of if it was a huge group, then we probably wouldn't all be able to talk. And I liked that if we could share our experience with each other, because if someone didn't understand part of it and someone did, they could tell them or speak to them about it and then they would get a fuller understanding of the book.
My experience with the book club was since we were in smaller groups, we got to break down the book even further and we got deeper thoughts. And because we were in smaller groups, we understood each other a lot more. We could challenge each other. We could say, oh, well, I think this because this. And we got to do a lot deeper thinking, a lot more work, a lot more in-depth work. And it was, it was a lot better because we all chose a topic that we wanted to read and that's why I like the book club.
My experience with the book club was that I was able to communicate with my peers better and get to know them as people and what they liked. And I found that really fun. When I also, during the book club, I was able to talk to them as peers and if I was not at a book club and I was talking to my teacher, I couldn't disagree with them and saying, no, I thought this just because that would be disrespectful and that wouldn't really work out. But when we were in book clubs with my peers, I was able to say, I don't really see how that works. And we were able to explain it and learn more about the book.
Hi, my name is Virginia Mancini and I teach seventh grade English. And today I'm joined with Bethel and Arjun. And we are going to talk about a book unit that we just finished called Investigating Character. The unit was designed for students to meet the standard, which is investigating how a character changes over the course of a novel and connecting that with theme. And the reason why I wanted to do, um, I'm wondering if this works. But the reason why I wanted to do this unit was that it gave students an opportunity to choose their own book. But also I wanted them to have the opportunity to be in control of their own tracking and be very independent about what they chose, what characteristics they chose to look for. And they worked in a reader's notebook. So first, maybe as you answer the question, if you could both sort of introduce yourselves. So my first question what is, how did you feel about choosing a book? And how is it similar or different from other reading experiences in the past? Bethel, you go first. Great.
Yeah. My name's Bethel Derrick and to choose my book, I was pretty confident. And in the end, I really enjoyed the book that I read. And for it to be different and similar, I'd say it's similar because I enjoyed the book that I read. And usually when I read books, I choose it because I like it. But for it to be different, I had to understand it more than usual.
Which book did you choose, Bethel?
I chose the book Sparrow.
By Sarah Moon?
Yeah.
Yeah. What was Sparrow about a little bit?
Um, it was like differences between people, like their genders and races and how they react towards one another.
Yeah. And Sparrow was the main character?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was, is she in middle school, I think, if I remember correctly?
Um, yeah, I think so.
Cool. So Arjun, why don't you go next and tell me about what book you chose?
Okay. So my name is Arjun Chandra and I chose the book The Unteachables. I think it was by Gordon Cormac.
It is Cormac. Yep. Or Gordon. You're right.
So basically when I was choosing my book, I liked it because like I was able to read the back before I dove right into the book and then not liked it.
Oh, okay. So did you like, so did you like it?
Yeah.
Okay. What was it about again?
It was about Mr. Kermit and how he was a teacher who's been burnt out for many years now.
Right. And then he is placed in a classroom where he has to help a whole bunch of students who are also placed in the classroom because they were sort of burnt out on school?
Yeah, like they were considered from other teachers, unteachables.
And then in the end, did they come together as like a class?
Yeah, they kind of came together as a class with the students kind of like understanding how Mr. Kermit felt about his job.
Okay, cool. So in class, remember I talked about how a good story can be a window into somebody else's life or a mirror in your own life? And I was just wondering if the books that you read provided any windows or mirrors? Maybe both. Arjun, do you want to go first this time?
Yeah, sure. So it kind of gave me a window into like teachers' lives because it's probably not as easy as like students think. And to teach a whole class, like every year, the same material must get like repetitive over time and boring.
Not when we have students like you, Arjun. It makes it all fun. What about you? Did you have any window or mirror moments?
I had a mirror moment because some of the events that had shown up in the book had like happened in my life as well, just sort of explained differently.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable giving us an example? You don't have to.
Um, like making friends. Cause like I started like in fifth grade, I had moved here. So I didn't have any friends, but, and like I wasn't more of like an open person.
Oh. Yeah, I can see that's definitely Sparrow, what is Sparrow's like internal conflicts. Awesome. Um, last was like, another goal of the unit was to help kids learn how to take charge of their own learning. And I tried to do this through the reader's notebook and through the book club. So, um, did that, do you think that the unit achieved this? And if so, in what ways?
Um, yeah, I think it accomplished the goal because, and you can't just take a book and just scan it. You have to actually understand what's happening in the books for you to understand the questions and answer them.
Okay. Arjun?
Yeah, I agree mostly with Bethel. This book unit achieved that because you were able to pick your own book and like you could sort of pick the people in your group. Like you could tell your friends to pick that same book. So it kind of what gives you like freedom of choice instead of like being assigned to a book and then not liking it.
How did the book clubs go for you? Did you enjoy talking about it with your, with the people in your book group?
Yeah, for me it was fun because they had different perspectives on what was happening that kind of like opened my eyes on like what I should also be thinking maybe.
Okay. What about you, Bethel?
I enjoyed the people that I worked with. They were really fun and gave me new ways to see what was happening in the book and the Sparrow.
Yeah. And Bethel, you're a distance learner. How did, did it work? Okay. Was it pretty smooth? Um, joining the meet and still having the breakout sessions in the meet and things like that?
Definitely. We all got along really well and it wasn't hard to explain what we thought.
So do you think I should do this again?
Yeah, definitely. It was really an assignment.
Okay, great. Well, any other last words that you want to share with, with me or the school board?
No, not really.
All right. Well, thanks so much for letting me interview you and I appreciate all your insights. Have a good day.
You too.
Bye.
Great group of, great, great kids and really enjoyed what they're doing and that insight and being able to do some peer work together. So that was awesome to go in there and watch them be part of those book, book groups as well. And to listen to all their insightful talk. They are so brilliant. And you don't know what they're coming up with, but when they're engaged and they love the books and they got to pick the book that they're reading, it's not something forced on them, they just take off. So that's, that's, it's been an awesome experience for them. One other program that we did this year was because of our distance learning and because of our hybrid, our counselors really felt like it was hard for them to connect with kids. You know, because usually right now when they're in person, they can walk the hallways, they can be in the lunchroom, they can go to Zephyr Time and see kids and so forth. But when, when it was distance learning hybrid, it was really tough to do that. And we also had a second step program, which was great, but the counselors really wanted to continue to build that trust and relationships and that inclusive community themselves. And so what they did is they asked to take over the second step. They use the Castle curriculum and the standards from the Castle curriculum, the social emotional learning curriculum. And they started to develop their own Wellness Wednesday videos. And so what they did, and for some people, they had to learn technology. Mr. Bagan, who's been teaching for 51 years, had to learn how to do a Google Meet and tape on video off of Google Meet. And he did a great job. They had little pictures of themselves and, and they really did a good job of looking at grade specific material in lessons. They took some things that kids were feeling throughout the week that they'd been hearing from kids and from teachers and trying to build that lesson. So it was really to the minute, you know, and really relational for kids and something that they could really understand and connect with. So what they did is they took that over. They made these 10 minute videos. The teachers would show them during their classes on the first in the morning, right away in the morning. And then the teacher or the counselors also did a Google Classroom, which they'd never done before. They had their own Google Classroom and within that Google Classroom had referrals to different places. You know, resources for kids to go to. They had their own videos for kids to watch. Also, they would ask kids questions during, during the video and say, go to my Google Classroom and answer the question. And then they would have drawings to try to get kids there. They have drawings for, for prizes or whatever. It was great because they would ask kids, how's your week going? How's your homework going? How's, you know, they would ask different types of questions that they got lots of responses. And then those kids were, it's been a tough week or I'm having a tough time or I don't have any friends or, you know, then they could call them up or they could email them and say, hey, let's meet. And they would set their own Google Meet with kids and they would do their own small groups or lunch groups and so forth with these kids while they're at home in distance learning. And so again, this was staff initiated was, and it wasn't just Mr. Bagan. It was all three counselors. They each have a grade level and they did again, grade level specific topics that were important to that grade level at the time that kids were really working with and dealing with. So I think I have another video. Oh, actually, so the sixth grade teachers here, some comments. It's really helped them because what they did is they had the kids watch the 10 minute video and then opened up the conversation for them as well. Sometimes our teachers are not so trained in, in starting the conversations. So these videos helped start those conversations for kids. And they may have another 10 minute talk or, or something that they can then process what was said. And then the teachers were allowed then to go into the Google Classroom to see kind of what, you know, to try those questions and see what was on there, some other videos as well. So it was a great, um, just a, a great program for our kids.
This year, the counselors decided that with us being in and out of school at various times with different groups of students and some being here and some being at home, we needed a new way to address the social emotional needs of the students, to address their stress as they were going through the different parts of the pandemic and to help them get to know each other in, in ways that they wouldn't be able to this year because of not being here every day. So we talked about how we could address this and how, how we could get to all students. The first thing we did was we decided we needed to have a Google Classroom like the other teachers, because the kids were used to that. And so if we each could create a Google Classroom and put resources linked to the classroom for them, then they'd be able to at least connect with us, connect with their teachers and also to ask questions when they needed support. We also thought we need to do some lessons that in fact the kids have opportunities to understand their needs, to express their needs, to meet other kids, to talk them over with other kids and to learn who they could go to and still build relationships with the adults that are here in our school community. Now, I was working with sixth graders and they hadn't even been in the building. They hadn't had a tour. We weren't able to do an orientation in the normal way. So what I wanted to do was to get my face out there so that they could recognize me and know what my role was and then know what the role of the other people who were here to help them would be throughout the year and how that might look when we were doing distance learning. And so I created videos to begin with that just introduced them to the middle school and to the things that I knew middle school students would be worried about. And then as we went from week to week, all three grade level counselors asked the students what it was that they were dealing with as far as stress, as far as questions on things that they didn't understand, how to connect, how to get together with other students. And then we developed the next lessons based on what the students were telling us. Students seemed to really like the program. They were engaged in it. Teachers loved doing it. We decided we would do it on a consistent day. So we picked Wednesdays and we called it Wellness Wednesdays. And that way everyone knew at the same time in the building, we were all working on our relationship skills. So that's how we put this all together. And looking ahead, we're looking at some of the ways that this was really helpful. And even when we're back in school, the tools could be used in the future to help the kids connect too. So we'll be evaluating the best parts of the program, getting feedback from students and teachers and deciding how we move forward and which parts of this we continue to do going into the future so that we can continue to address the social emotional needs that are, that we want to address as a school building and as a school district. Thank you for letting me share the program with you.
Hi. So I'm here to talk about how Mr. Bagan's Google Classroom page helped us out as a community. It personally helped me out with how to open my locker and how to get around the school building. It also helped with a situation in a friend group and it was very helpful to work through those problems with him virtually or in person.
Hi, I'm here to tell you guys about how, um, at first I didn't know who Mr. Bagan was because it just said join Mr. Bagan's classroom. And then when I did join his classroom, I just, I forgot who he was at school and I looked and I figured out that he was a great guy and that you could talk to him comfortably whenever you have problems or anything going on at school or anything like that.
I really enjoyed the Wellness Wednesday videos because they taught me like that I can talk to people that having to be worried about like bullying and things like that. And it also taught me the, the way to distinguish between rude, mean and bullying.
So again, both of these are examples of where our staff saw that there was a real need to be able to reach out to students and engage students in different ways. And we are beyond, this is going to go beyond this year. The counselors, they stay with that same group. Mr. Bagan will stay with that same group for the next two years. And so he'll be able to really build those relationships. He is going to know, be known around the sixth grade as one of the worst joke tellers ever because he tells a joke at the end of each one. And the kids talk about how, at lunch, about how bad the joke was, you know, and so forth. So, but it's his way of connecting with kids. And, and the seventh and eighth grade counselors did the same thing as well. And it's really helped us to be able to, to meet kids where they're at and be able to do that social emotional help as well, which is very important at the middle school level. So any questions regarding the two programs?
So, um, you know what? It was unclear to me, are all the sixth and seventh grade teachers doing the book club? Or did I, did I just miss that?
Um, no, right now, Ms. Mancini in the seventh grade and the two sixth grade teachers are doing it. They're the most trained in the readers workshop and this is the first year we're doing the readers workshop. So they're doing it as, the three of them are doing it kind of as a pilot program and then going to build upon it for next year.
I was just so excited. I really was. I missed the details.
There's a lot of stuff that goes into it. Just not putting kids in small groups. There's a lot of training that goes with it as well. So I think they want to take what they're learning from the readers workshop part and be able to incorporate that. And then the other teachers will be trained in it as well as we move forward.
Both are so good and I just hope that that counseling office, the, the virtual way is a way that really helps kids connect with the counselors because I think they are always kind of a mystery to them. So I, I hope it helps.
Well, I mean, right now we're in person, so they're always in the hallway still mean. But some kids would rather prefer to wait till they go home and then maybe go online. So they make appointments with them and it's better to do it face to face than, because you can put them on a Google Meet and they've been able to do some things before school or after school. You know, sometimes we'll get parents who say, my child is just, has anxiety and doesn't want to come to school today. And so, you know, Mr. Bagan or one of the counselors will go online on a Google Meet and be able to talk to them face to face to try to see what's going on and not just a phone call or wait till they try to come to school. So it's been great.
Or the idea that a face to face interaction is harder.
Yeah, yes.
Tony?
I just wanted to comment that the Wellness Wednesday program is just such a great way of combining wellness with student agency as well as technology as a tool. It just shows what this device for every learner is allowing teachers and students to connect in ways that, you know, take down barriers and give access to students. And I just really appreciate you sharing that with us.
Just making sure no one else has questions. I, for the Wellness Wednesday, will that continue in the next couple of years?
Yes, that's, the point is for that to continue. Yes, the point is for that to continue.
It'll be in person, I'm guessing, though, as long as we're.
It will be in person, but the kids, I mean, we're in person now and Mr. Mr. Beggins still continues it because as we get into transition into next year and sixth grade just seems to be a little bit, need more right now that he, and they don't want to miss on any jokes. They they miss it. They ask if it's not there. If a teacher doesn't show it or forgets to show it, they're, hey, we need Wellness Wednesday. And so he he's still consistently doing it. With fourth quarter, with fourth quarter happening, the other two counselors at this time just told the teachers, we're not going to do it at this point just because things get pretty busy for them. And they, and we're at the point where those seventh and eighth grade teachers are really working on relationships themselves and helping kids get through. But really for sixth grade, Mr. Beggins felt like it was necessary just to keep going with what he was doing because he had some great responses with kids, so.
And one other question about the book clubs.
Yeah.
Do you see those continuing maybe even beyond the classroom? Or has there been any talk of anyone who wanted to to continue it and?
We've had, we've had kids in the past who've asked to meet after school. And what we do is tell them, meet with the teacher. You know, they can meet with Ms. Mancini and go into Ms. Mancini's room and have their own book clubs and be able to work with that. So I I don't know about having an organized type book club. They've kind of been their own organization, kind of kid led, and then they work with the teacher and say, hey, can we meet in the room and do this book? We want to read this book together and do this in your room. And then she's there. So that's happened in the past. But, you know, right now we're just trying to do it within the instructional day because I think it's important for kids to get hooked into those books that way and get engaged. And then they'll see, then we can probably do more after school book clubs as well.
Well, I I'm a big fan of reading and I love book club and I I just love it whenever kids are exposed to that. So I I'm really happy to hear so many kids were. So thank you. Any other, oh, Kelly.
A couple of things. I heard you say that they're the focus or effort on more diverse book collection. So that was really exciting to see that they're offering some, maybe other than traditional offices in our library. I think that was great. Also, I love the comments from the students that virtual students versus the face to face students, that they were able to connect because we've seen that there's been a disconnect with students at times who have been at home and being able to build those relationships and, you know, feeling like what's missing, right, if they're at home. So I really appreciated her comment, you know, that just came from her. And then kind of the last comment and one question I had for you, way to go, Mr. Beggins, about learning the technology. Even an old dog can learn new tricks, right?
I'm not going to tell you, call him an old dog.
But way to go, Mr. Beggins. That's awesome. He didn't even seem nervous to be recorded like that, so that was great. But my question is, one thing I didn't understand is the, what is, can you give me a little detail on the second step program? I, what that is, like, what's the, does that encompass more than what we heard today?
Actually, the second step program is a program that we purchased and that we've had purchased in the past. And it's, it's, teachers have to prepare for it a little bit more. And that's another reason why the counselors wanted to take this over. They wanted to take that off the plate of the teachers when they've been so busy and trying to do some connecting. So that's another reason why they wanted to try the Wellness Wednesday. But Second Step does sort of the same things. They'll take friendship. They'll take anger management. They'll take dealing with stress. They'll take conflict. And they have kids kind of do a role play. You know, it's a video of kids doing role play and then there's some questions that it presents. It might be some PowerPoint slides on how to deal with it. And the teachers are expected. It's about a 20 minute program each day. Or we used to do it once a week. There's 25 different lessons. And then they would kind of work through that with the kids. Much of the same sort of things that we, our our counselors were dealing with. But our counselors were kind of trying to do what they see was the most needed in our school at the time, especially with distance learning. Second Step is a program that you can buy throughout the country and use. And it's a great program, but our, again, our counselors want to take that off the teacher's plate because there is some prep time that goes with that and really be able to make it a real time and real, a real perspective for kids.
What it was was more of a curriculum that was purchased. But then with the Wellness Wednesday, like, how is it identified? Who's a part of that, like, in that Google Classroom? Is it completely students selecting that they're a part of it or counselors asking students to be a part of it?
So what what it is is all kids can sign up to go into it. And, you know, at the beginning of the year, they have the kids to log in. The teachers had the kids log into each one. So now they're part of the Google Classroom. It's like signing up for an English class, you know, that sort of thing. And so then kids are the ones who go into there. That's why the teachers were giving them time. Okay, go into the Google Classroom, see the resources that are there, answer the question from Mr. Beggins or Mr. Rainier about the wellness thing, about the wellness today. Go in, I'll give you a few minutes to go and answer that. And so then they would go do that. But it's really then at that point, after the Wellness Wednesday, it's the kids who want to go in there and be a part of that.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
And now, next on the agenda is a report from our student representative. Hello, it's Maal.
Thank you. So my student report for the month of April at Wildwood on the 16th. And they had a tornado drill. And today, the April 22nd, they had an Earth Day where they dressed up in clothes featuring their favorite animals or the earth, nature, or camouflage. At O H Anderson, they primarily for this month, we're doing a lot of M C A testing. And they had another event, I guess, today for their Earth Day. Same with the middle school. There was a lot of M C A testing, so I feel kind of bad for them. But in the high school, they had their celebration of excellence yesterday at six and their yard sign distribution yesterday as well after school. Not to mention, at the high school prom is May 22nd, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. And now for our superintendent report.
Yeah, thanks. So Happy Earth Day, everybody. It is Earth Day. And Kelly and I were able to go to O H A today and see Earth Day in action a little bit and the various themes, themed activities around Earth Day. We did not get to Wildwood, which we hear was a lot of fun with the animal costumes. Apparently, they were all in, you know, I don't know, did we get pictures of that? I looked at Alice. Were you there to get some good shots of that? Yeah, yeah. So I think it was, yeah, it was, it was a little different, but yeah, we we got to see Earth Day. And I will direct your attention to the back of the room. If you haven't gotten to see it yet, we do have our History Day display in the back. So a lot of my superintendent's report is going to be about all the student celebrations and things that we're going through because it's that time of year. But in the back, these are History Day projects and you can use your phone. There are Q R codes so you can see the documentaries and the websites. And we're going to leave this display up for those of you watching from home. We're going to leave this display up so that people can come in and as they're here at the district office that they can then can see these History Day projects. You know, normally, in a normal year, it's a huge event where we get to all go around and interview the students about their History Day topic and it's, it's very fun. So we can't do that, but you can see the picture of the student and you can check out their project here. So thanks to our ninth grade history teachers who work. History Day is a huge undertaking and it took them a lot of extra time to support students in creating these projects. So, so thanks for that. These are fun. Also, just in, the White Bear Center of the Arts has two competitions. It's the Right Now competition. It's a writing competition for our students and also a visual arts competition. And I'm sure we will send out all the the Mad Media Award winners, but I will call out. We did have one of our students win an Award of Excellence for Creative Nonfiction, which is, who is Hannah Rose Bruin Trump, perhaps? It will be spelled correctly, maybe, even if I'm not pronouncing it correctly. For Addictive was the name of her creative nonfiction piece. And so she did win the Award of Excellence for that. And then the High School Visual Arts Contest Best in Show went to Luke Carlson, who is a senior this year. So congratulations to all of our students who participated. And there are a number of students who had various awards for their, for their work. I also have, I wanted to also acknowledge the Celebration of Excellence that happened. That's an annual event for us to recognize our graduating seniors who achieved at a very high level and are top scholars. And so we do have, we do have a program kind of floating around here too, if you wanted to take a look. It's a great event because it's both recognizing the student and also the student gets an opportunity to recognize a teacher who made a difference for them. And so we saw, for example, a third grade teacher, a kindergarten teacher, a coach, in addition to a number of the high school, quite a few of our high school teachers that were there. So it just is, it's just, it's a, it's a really nice evening. And we also had an opportunity to recognize Lael Ramali for her years of service, both the school board and the city council, just all, so many ways that she's contributed to Mad Media. And she's the one that founded the Celebration of Excellence 20 years ago. So we had an opportunity to recognize her. And they did. They gave out a scholarship in her name to to two students. They, they were able to nominate one another for, for more of a character sort of award. So these were high achieving students who then nominated one another for a character contribution type of award. I'm sorry, I don't have the language in front of me. And so, so we did have students win that as well. So it was, it was just a very nice evening. And so thank you to those who who organized it. I know it was a lot of work. It was going to be a virtual event. And then when the, when the rules changed on health or health and safety rules, they pivoted quickly and created something in person so that we could all be together. This Saturday, I know a few of you are going to be joining us to hear about our MAPS presentation. MAPS Modeling a Protein Story Team is going to be giving a presentation over at the middle, or at the high school, excuse me, on Saturday. If you're able to join us, that would be great. They would love, they would love an audience. And the the topic is the deafening importance of aquaporin four. So we're going to learn a lot. Because I did not realize of the deafening importance. So I'm looking forward to that. Well, I'm, I'm certainly going.
Kevin, you're on it.
Oh, Kevin.
Kevin. On Saturday, I will, I will be able to let you know after Saturday if that's what it is, so. And that is what I did want to make sure I called out today. I know, I, you know, one thing, I know we're going to talk about the, give the Policy Committee report a little later. And so maybe, you know what, I'm going to wait for my last little bit until after we've talked about the policy report. So that is my report for this right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next are, is discussion items. And we just have our board member calendar. Does anyone have anything they want to point out? Small or too big for me to read, but I guess it's worth noting graduation. I can't tell if it's on here because it's too little.
Is graduation on there right now? It is on the 12th. It is scheduled for the 12th. You will know that it's, it's scheduled to be outside. And we do, any senior parent in the room would have gotten all the different rain dates because we really would like to be outside. If we're outside, we can have more people than if we're inside, so that's our goal. You know, we're hopeful that perhaps we'll be able to have more than we can at this moment. If things get better, maybe we'll have even more of an ability to have more. But at this time, we, we can have, we are limited. We are limited in our capacity, but we can get the most people if we do it outside. So that's our plan right now.
And it looks like we have Passages Graduation happening. And I thought I saw on there the, the awards evening as well.
Scholarship night, I believe, is on the, oh, I don't know.
It is May 12th.
May 12th.
May 12th, the scholarship night.
Well, those are probably still following strict.
They are, yes.
Guidelines. I think it's great that they're happening.
Yes.
Anything else? Anyone wants to point out?
Well, you know, I will have stuff in my, in my report. I had the May 12th on there. But the next Food Truck Friday is May 21st. And the first one was a success, so I'll tell you more about that. But if you're marking your calendar, May 21st. Apparently, you should come early because it was a huge success.
I was there early, so I didn't, I don't know how how it ended. I wondered if you ran out of food, but there was a good turnout. Oh, oh, that's a, that's good then. Okay, action items. So now, Julie, we are on to the approval of donations and grants totaling $12,973. These are all greatly appreciated. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, it used to be in consent agenda. That's why, I didn't want you to forget it, so.
Oh, thank you. All right, so I guess we need to approve this.
Okay, roll call vote. Kevin?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuny?
Aye.
Aye. And all of these funds will be used to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. And next on the agenda are the approval of policies with recommended changes.
Yes, these are policies I've brought to you before and I haven't heard of any questions or concerns from the last time I brought these to you, so I'm just recommending that they go forward with the changes that we've, we've talked about previously.
By Kevin, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the Policy Committee for all of their work on this because it's, it's a heavy lift.
All of these, so. It's not unusual that there's not any questions at this point, so we, I think, can move on to a vote.
Hey, Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuny?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is personnel. There is a recommendation to approve employment for licensed personnel listed on the agenda who will continue to be on a probationary status for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
So moved.
By Tony, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? I think we can have a roll call vote then.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuny?
Aye.
And Stacy Stowe.
Aye. Next, there is a recommendation to improve employment for licensed personnel listed on the agenda who will continue to be on probationary state, status for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
But this one is. They're moving from probation.
Oh, I read the wrong one. I apologize. We just voted on that other one. Okay, so this is the recommendation to approve contract status for licensed personnel listed here, moving from probationary status to continuing contract status for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
So moved.
By Julie, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion?
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuny?
Aye.
And Stacy Stowe.
Aye. The motion carries. I forgot to say that previously. And next is the approval of the resolution to terminate and non-renew the probationary teaching contracts of the employees listed on the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
By Kevin, seconded by Julie. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuny?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. And next are committee reports. And then we will start with Tony, the A M S D report.
The A M S D meeting at the beginning of the month, we had Representative DeMuth and Representative Frazier come in and answer some nice questions about what's happening. about what was happening at the legislature. And it's still happening, so we're keeping our ears out and how everything passes through. And then we had a really wonderful discussion with Peter Leatherman. And he presented some findings on a recent survey conducted across the state of Minnesota. If you're looking at some just polling data of all sorts of various topics that he went through on how community members are viewing the school in different climates, it's a really great talk. And he thinks we're moving out of this tunnel towards the light of how perceptions might have changed from pre-pandemic to where we are now. And I believe we might be working with him in the future. So you might get a nice idea if you want to go back and listen to the recording of that presentation. And that's all I have for the AMSD.
We just had our MAFE board meeting on Monday, April 19th. And again, scholarship night, May 12th. A reminder to anyone watching, this is really exciting. But the deadline for applying for the Community True Year Tech Ed Scholarship is May 31st, and they're still looking for applicants. Giving week for MAFE will be May 9th through 15th. So after the meeting today, I will be hitting everyone up for a little donation that the board will contribute something to contribute for the very mini auction that they plan to have. The format this year is, is a week-long event. Unfortunately, more like NPR giving, where they'll do matching funds and highlighting things, but they will be mainly spotlighting things in the school. I mean, the, I'm saying the dread because sometimes pledge week in NPR gets a little old sometimes. But this will be exciting because they'll be using it to spotlight great things in the school. And, and then they will be auctioning off some items. So instead of asking businesses for, small businesses for donations this year, we're trying to have some people buy things from small businesses to help them in, through their, through their tough times, just to support them. So, so that's what we'll be looking for, the small donation, so that we can contribute something that MAFE can auction off. Let's see. So yeah, they're looking for 15 to 16 items. I think that that's about it. They, they sold high fives at the high school, I think I told you last time, and those were distributed last week. It wasn't as popular as it wasn't in, in the elementary school, but apparently the teachers were very happy who received the high fives. So there you go. That's it.
Thank you. Lucy?
So for MSBA, I sent out a note to board members on April 15th. Barb and I were asked to guest blog for Knowledge Works on the work we're doing with instructional hours. So that was published and put out nationally for the work that we've been doing. And then Barb and I met this week, continuing on the instructional hours work with the Minnesota Department of Education, MSBA, and Barb reminded, there was someone else there. Was our other party, was it just the three? Oh, Education Minnesota was there. And so we had a really good conversation about build language and things that different groups had concerns about that might need to be changed. And so we're currently working on proposing some redrafted language to share with the House and Senate in, in that area. And we'll see what happens. That's it.
Great, thank you. And Kevin, 916.
Well, the, I've talked to Fairmount at the past meetings about the superintendent search, superintendent selection vote by the board. And it is now official because the contract has been offered and signed. But Dr. Valerie Boe is going to be 916's superintendent starting July 1, with Connie Hayes retiring on June 30th. So that is a, you know, a transition. It'll be interesting to see, you know, oftentimes when you change leadership, you get some, some real growth opportunities. And I think it's, you know, I think there's been some discussion about how to make sure that the member districts have voice in what 916 is doing. So this, I would, I know Barb and I have talked about it. And so that's coming. The other piece that's right now going to be working through is the Joint Powers Agreement. We have a joint powers agreement that binds us together in this consortium, this collaborative. And there are rules and regulations about joining and about pulling out. And we've had St. Francis pulled out, or is pulling out, it'll be done at the end of June. And there is some updating needed on this joint powers agreement, which I don't know if you've seen yet, Barb, have you?
I have. They had shared it with us. And since then, there are a few districts that have some additional questions. So they were going to present this evening, and now they've held off so that they can address the questions of a few of the districts.
So this board and all the other member district boards have to vote for this before it then comes back to the, to the 916 board. So I guess we'll be seeing that.
We'll have a presentation when it's time.
Yep. Now for board subcommittee reports.
Kevin, update on the policy committee. We met right before this meeting. A group of students from the high school requested that we review Policy 506, which is regarding student discipline. And we had a wonderful discussion about how to look at the policy through an equity lens and listening to some of their concerns and needs of how we can better incorporate some of our missions and visions into that policy. There's no recommendations at this time. We're going to go back to continuing to review this and continuing that conversation as soon as all that data gets gathered. If there's anything else.
And I'll just add, one of the things the, the students really requested was the idea that we have continual training for our staff, for all, all licensed staff. And I know that we've participated in the same training as a school board as well. And I just wanted to just kind of call that out as something that was really important for them to know that we as adults and as leaders in this community are, are taking our own growth seriously as leaders and, and really exam, you know, examining, well, doing the equity training alongside all of our teachers and, and other staff and other leaders. And, and really, I'll say, really pushed us as leaders to, to lead, lead this equity work. So I just wanted to call that out as something that was really important to them and I know is important to you as well. So we're, we're all, we're all moving forward together. I, I haven't, I'm sorry, was there anything else from the policy committee? I have a, one that we don't typically report on, and that's Metro EXU. So they have an annual, an annual meeting. And our representative couldn't make it this time. And I can't remember which of you is the representative. Nonetheless, I know somebody could. Lucy, okay, and Lucy's out of town, so Lucy couldn't make it. But I, but I chaired the, I chaired the executive committee, so I'm there anyway. So it worked out just fine. And the, the annual, the annual meeting is an opportunity for Metro EXU to highlight the services they provide districts. And so EXU is a service co-op, and it provides various, various services for districts so that we can collaborate, not unlike 916, only in a different way. So we have, we can collaborate on some of those special ed, for example, special education services for low incident student, you know, low incident programming. They do some student programming, like Young Authors Conference is something that we've participated in the past. And so they had an opportunity to kind of present on how they have re-envisioned some of those conferences and, and services that they provide. So I'll just say, it's always, it is a really good, it's a good one to come to. So whoever's the rep next, I'll just say, it's just good to know what kind of services are out there for our districts, especially a district our size. And so that's what, that's what the annual meeting was about.
I have community ed, does anyone else have others report? Okay. We had our community ed meeting, advisory council meeting yesterday. And Kate gave us the, the big rundown of over 300 people attending her first Food Truck Friday. It was a big success. Just to promote the May event, May 21st, she's planning on having mini donuts and probably another food truck. And, and she has contracted, contacted the food person that you recommended. Apparently he's very busy. He's very busy, but, but she has contacted him. And then in June, she's likely going to have a jazz band. Jazz ensemble, yes. So if you'd like that, it sounds like a great evening of community connections. Other things that Kate reported was that summer MAC enrollment is down about a half. So this is a hard year for community ed. And so they're doing the best they can to continue things rolling, but they did have to, they did have to have a permanent layoff at the secondary. And, and that was in some of the adult programming. So they're hoping that once seniors get, get vaccinated and we can get more back to normal, that maybe, maybe next school year, we can bring someone back for those programs because our senior programs are robust. And so it's very hard. But along that line, Kate has a group of people putting together some May baskets to drop off for seniors as kind of a cheer. So that will be a positive thing. And June, in June, the fall registration for MAC will be open. So that's, that's a time that people will want to pay attention to and. And she's planning a great safety camp for the summer. And, and soon, community ed will be mailing out like a youth sports catalog, like an addendum to the summer catalog that will have more programming in it. I was just going to highlight some of the things. There's improved wrestling, there's competitive swimming and volleyball, there's the Missoula Children's Theater Camp. And just such a wide variety of programs. Everyone should go check out her, her catalog. And Kate has generously donated a couple auction items for MAFE that people will cover so kids could attend the Missoula Theater Camp or the basketball camp. So, so that is a lot. You know, there's, there's a lot of things still going on in community ed. And now there's, there's a lot of hard work going on in that office. So thank you, Kate. It's a big seller.
All right, any other reports? I covered the city leaders meeting, and Barb, you were there too. So help me remember if there's something I'm forgetting. But it was really nice. It was nice to see the mayors of Willarney and Madam Medei. One thing that they pointed out are that the streetlights that are new, has anyone noticed those along our street?
The banners.
The banners, the banners, yes, they look so good. So that's, there's, it kind of shows the history and it shows the Madam Medei and the Willarney when each were founded. And so I thought.
Colors too.
Yes, and the Madam Medei colors. So I just thought they were looked really nice when I.
Barb was very intentional about the Madam Medei's depth of colors in the banners.
Barb Parent.
Barb Parent. Not Barb, not Barb Duffer, Barb Parent.
The parent, that is just the credit where the credit's due. Yeah, yes, she was. And then Aaron was there and shared about the community and on-campus parade. So I don't know if many of you remember last year, because we were into COVID by that point, there was a community parade. I guess there was a school parade too, but there was one, kind of an impromptu, like generated by the community. And so this year it will be more formalized, and they'll do that as one big parade, which I thought was great. I felt like it was a great way for the community to all be out. It was, we were in the midst of COVID at that time, and obviously we will still be coming through that. But it's just great because you can still celebrate all the students.
And the city council did it for it on Tuesday.
Oh, great.
And so the parade is set for June 2nd, and the rain date is June 3rd. It is 3:30 to 4:30, I think.
So that way our staff can participate as well, because our teachers, of course, all loved it as well, being able to see the kids. So it'll be great.
So it'll start, Kelly, over in the parking lot by Wildwood. And kind of the, the fire truck will be the Pacer truck to keep everybody.
And then I just have one other report. There was a Gibson and Talented Advisory Committee earlier this week and a really good presentation on the high school programming with college and the schools and advanced placement. And just really, for someone who doesn't have a high schooler yet, I felt like I learned a lot. And there's a really good discussion about some more programming that we might want to pursue adding some cert, some classes. And there was just really, really good conversation around that. And it sounds like that's how some courses have come about in the past couple of years. And so it was exciting to be talking about where can we go from here and build on what's been, been put into the high school just in, based on community input in recent years, so. And that's all I have. Is there anything else, Kelly?
Two things, and they're not a committee that I just, you know, as part of the. Saw a lot of familiar names that my own kids have had over the years, a lot of great teachers and, and a lot of expertise and great just human beings. So I just recognize a lot of names, just wanted to say thank you to all of those people who are transitioning to something different beyond the classroom. And then lastly, the MAFE yard signs, I thought were just a great touch. I know that my senior picked one up yesterday. And so MAFE is just always going above and beyond, and it's just fun to see over and over.
Also from city leaders, they let us know that June, the second week of June is when the farmer's market will be starting up again, and that will be in Veterans Park. So it's back, back up to where it used to be. Lots of dates. And Kelly, I finally met your senior son yesterday handing out signs, so. He's tall. Very tall.
All right, well, with that, I think we need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Oh, oh.
I think we need a roll call vote. It's on my sheet, but sometimes I'm overzealous with the roll call, so. Kevin?
Aye.
I. Lucy Payne?
Aye.
Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Tony Vasuni?
Aye.
And Stacy Stowe?
Aye. The ayes carry, and we are adjourned.